Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Sago ani budju wachea kwekwe. As the Mayor of the City of Kingston, I offer these words in the spirit of this gathering. Let us bring our good minds and hearts together as one to honour and celebrate these traditional lands as a gathering place of the original peoples and their ancestors who were entrusted to care for Mother Earth since time immemorial. It is with deep humility that we acknowledge and offer our gratitude for their contributions to this community, having respect for all as we share this space now and walk side by side into the future. We were just in the committee of the whole closed meeting. We had one item to discuss that had to do with a pending acquisition or disposition of land, 440 to 442 King Street West. So with that, Mr Clerk, I'll ask for a motion to rise without reporting.
Let's move by councillor Shell, seconded by councillor Turner. The council rises from committee of the whole closed meeting without reporting.
Please vote. And that carries. Next, we have the approval of the added. There are a couple of motions of congratulations. There is an item miscellaneous business, and then there are some communications. Can I have a mover, please? Moved by councillor Neil, seconded by deputy mayor Stroud. We will call the vote. Are there any disclosures of potential pecuniary interest? Councillor O'Sannick.
Thank you, your worship. I have a perceived conflict of interest that I want to declare. So I, Lisa O'Sannick of the Council of the Corporation of the City of Kingston, declare my pecuniary interest in the matter of new motion number one, discussing the adoption of the four patch fentanyl protocols, and that I am employed by the Ministry of Health and Long Term Care, which establishes and implements such policies. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else? So we have no presentations tonight, but we do have a number of delegations. So at this time, first, we will welcome Ms Kim Sunderland Mills from Blue Dot Kingston Frontenac, who will appear before council to speak to clause number one, report number seventy-two received from the EITP Committee with respect to the motion regarding Kingston Declaration for the Right to a Healthy Environment. And just a note to all of our delegations that you have five minutes.
Good evening. I'm here on behalf of Blue Dot Kingston Frontenac, a team of concerned residents who hope that city council will pass the declaration on our right to a healthy environment brought forward by EITP this evening. Our group is part of a broader Blue Dot movement inspired by David Suzuki's 2014 Blue Dot Tour, and supported by the David Suzuki Foundation and Ecojustice. Canadians from all regions and walks of life have joined the movement, forming local chapters that are asking municipalities to declare their residents' right to a healthy environment, and encourage their home provinces and territories to develop or enhance existing environmental rights legislation, building a groundswell of local and provincial support for recognition of these rights at a federal level. More than 110 nations recognise the rights of their citizens to a healthy environment in their charters or constitutions. Canada does not, but we are working to change that. Across Canada, 67 municipalities representing more than 5 million Canadians have taken action since October 2014. Starting in Richmond, B.C., our momentum carried declarations in Whitehorse and Yellowknife, Vancouver and Montreal. In Ontario, Hamilton was the first community to step forward, followed rapidly by Kowartha Lakes, Richmond Hill, Aaron, Ajax, St Joseph, King, Springwater, Kitchener, the Waterloo region, the city of Waterloo, and just yesterday Burlington. Since February, more than 1,300 Kingston residents have endorsed our declaration, calling for Kingston City Council to do the same. When asked why they signed in support of tonight's motion, Kingstonians had this to say: "I'm signing because the health of our environment is at risk, and so are we as a result. We need strong laws to protect what is valuable from greed and exploitation. I believe awareness and education of an issue are paramount in achieving a healthy attainable environment. The people are the ones responsible for achieving this goal, and the more people that are involved, the more success there will be." "I have grandchildren. It's about our future," said one person quoting a Cree prophecy. "Only after the last tree has been cut down, only after the last river has been poisoned, only after the last fish has been eaten, only then will you find that money cannot be eaten. I want the world to be a better place where everyone can live and breathe and eat and drink without fear or challenge. We have to make some big changes if that is ever going to be achieved." And lastly, "I'm signing this because I believe in this mission. I believe that the city of Kingston and its residents can achieve a healthier environment. I'm signing this because my nine-year-old asked me to, and if she believes in this mission, so do I." Together, we ask Kingston to stand with other cities, towns and villages across Canada, and to state your belief that for livability and wellbeing, all people have the right to live in a healthy environment, including the right to breathe clean air, the right to drink clean water, the right to consume safe food, the right to access nature, the right to know about pollutants and contaminants released into the local environment, and the right to participate in decision-making that will affect the environment. Kingston has already taken significant action and developed strategies to target areas identified by Blue Dot communities across Canada, such as the reduction of greenhouse gas emissions, increased density, prioritising walking, cycling and transit as preferred modes of transportation, and improvements in recycling and composting. Our declaration celebrates our success to date and encourages continued movement towards reaching the city's goals. Kingston aspires to be the most sustainable city in Canada. By issuing this declaration, Kingston would join those communities across our nation, taking leadership on environmental rights and protection for all Canadians. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions from council? Seeing none, thank you very much. Our next delegation this evening is Alan McDougall and Leah Kelly from the Blue Dot Movement at Queen's University, who appear before council to speak to clause one, report seventy-two from the EITP Committee, again with respect to the motion regarding the Kingston Declaration for the Right to a Healthy Environment.
Thank you. My name's Alan McDougall, and this is Leah Kelly. We're here representing the Queen's Blue Dot Movement, and I'd also like to thank them here representing my friends and colleagues at Queen's University, students that are in several different disciplines and from several different cultures. Many of us at Queen's realise how important this declaration is for the city, but also for Canada. We realise that this declaration will reinforce our progressive city goal of being the most sustainable city in Canada, and also the broader political and ecological implications. In my time at Queen's, I've learned that everything is connected in nature. For example, pollutants that are released from agriculture in southwest Ontario make their way into the watershed through the Thames River, and that ends up contaminating Lake Erie. And this leads to elgal blooms, which can lead to narrow toxins being in water. It can also lead to anoxic conditions in Lake Erie, which is detrimental to aquatic life, sorry. So what I'm saying is that it's important for as many communities across Canada as possible, as many municipalities across Canada as possible, to commit to this declaration or release this declaration. So there are now 66 municipalities that have released a declaration, but as integral as many municipalities as possible commit. The more municipalities that are successful in releasing a declaration such as Kingston, maybe municipalities that aren't as environmentally conscientious will be encouraged to follow as well. So from a personal perspective, I grew up in Sarnia, Ontario, and I've seen the impact of industry and pollution on public health, including myself. I've grown up with acute asthma, and I've had a friend who has passed away due to cancer, and so I've seen how pollution can affect people's lives directly. So from a broader perspective and from a personal perspective, a declaration of promise such as this is essential to preserve the beautiful land that we are blessed with, with ample clean freshwater, and to protect our health and future generations. Thank you.
All right. So I just wanted to talk briefly about the fact that Kingston is actually already a leader in this campaign. So at Queen's University, when I was with the student government, the Alma Matters Society, myself and some of my volunteers actually started the Blue Dot Campus Challenge. It was its first year this year. We probably intend to continue it next year, but we had 16 post-secondary institutions from across Canada participate. It was one week to collect as many signatures of support as possible. Collectively, we took in about 3,600 signatures, 800 of which were Queen's. So Queen's actually won this sort of challenge. We got the most signatures of any post-secondary institution in Canada who participated in this initiative. So I think that shows a huge level of support from the Queen's community, and of course, everyone who's part of the Queen's community is part of the broader Kingston community, which is why I think it is very important to recognise this declaration within Kingston. Of course, as has been mentioned, Kingston is already doing a lot towards making themselves the most sustainable city in Canada. That's achieved in both the private, public and nonprofit sectors. For example, we've got Sustainable Kingston. You guys have created a climate action plan with great greenhouse gas emissions reductions targets, which is fantastic. We have Switch Ontario, Transition Kingston, Wintergreen Studios, Green Centre Canada, and of course, our beautiful Wolf Island Wind Farm just across the way. So my point is that the city of Kingston is already doing all of the hard work that we want it to be doing. The Blue Dot Movement is just an official declaration that is another acknowledgement Kingston can make to demonstrate its recognition of the importance of a healthy, sustainable environment in Kingston and in Canada overall. As has been said, 67 municipalities have already signed on, and we think it's really important that Kingston joins this, makes this declaration, and can help contribute to a national desire to ensure access for Canadians to clean, healthy environments. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Are there any questions for the delegation? Seeing none, thank you very much. Our third delegation this evening is Rob Cumming, Chair of the Board of Directors, Sustainable Kingston, and Vivian Packman, Vice Chair of the Board of Directors, Sustainable Kingston, who will appear before council to speak to clause K, report number sixty-six received from the Chief Administrative Officer with respect to the Sustainable Kingston Plan Implementation.
Thank you very much. Seems to be a bit of a theme tonight on sustainability, which is not planned, but we're glad to have it happen. Thank you very much. So as the Mayor said, I'm the current Chair of Sustainable Kingston. Vivian is the Vice Chair of Sustainable Kingston, and in a few weeks will become the Chair of Sustainable Kingston. A number of years ago, the city of Kingston launched the Community Driven Sustainable Kingston Plan, and part of that, you created Sustainable Kingston. It was, I think, a genius move, well crafted, because this organisation could do things that the city staff that the city staff will have a harder time doing. For example, enlisting volunteers, making it feel like a community-driven organisation, enlisting partners. We're well over 200 community partners at this point. We're able to seek out charitable donations. We're able to obtain members, sponsorships. We've achieved over $30,000 to $50,000 in sponsorships in the last three years, and matching grants. We've doubled your money. So in short, we're able to stretch your dollars and free your staff to achieve your city's plan. Today, we are, we think we're one step closer to a smart, livable city, which is what we feel sustainability is really all about. And we have lots that we have to talk to you about in terms of what we've accomplished in the last couple of years, and I'll hand this over to Vivian.
Yes, I'm just going to talk to you about some of the activities that we've undertaken over the last couple of years. In order to achieve the vision of a sustainable city, it really is important that we involve as much as possible local businesses, local organisations, and of course, individuals in our community. And over the, one of the successes, I guess, of Sustainable Kingston has been the development of a large network of volunteers, and this has enabled us to conduct a number of annual and special events that bring together people who are knowledgeable about sustainability with those individuals who want to learn more. So some of these events include, for example, our annual community forum, which we changed the format a little bit last year to make it much more family-friendly. We called it Kingston Fest. It was a very successful forum. We had over 1,000 individuals attend. We had about 43 different organisations with booths presenting information to the public on how they can become more sustainable. We had classroom workshops on issues around sustainability. We had very, very positive feedback from those who attended in terms of what they would like to see going forward in the community. We also have each year, for the last two years now, we've been sponsoring the Kingston Plugged In, which is, which happens every March during Earth Hour. Really, that's a, the aim of that programme is to build awareness about energy conservation. Essentially, it's a, it's a, for one hour, we have a concert that's being powered completely by solar-powered batteries, and it's wonderful. Last year, we had over 800 participants, again, many different local businesses present to talk about what they're doing in Kingston to increase awareness in our community. It's a wonderful event. Right now, we have the Rain Barrel Campaign. We're working, Utilities Kingston provided us with rain barrels. We invited some local artists to paint the rain barrels. It's an activity to raise awareness about water conservation, and I encourage you to go online and to bid on these beautiful rain barrels. They're really works of art, and the money will be used to further our environmental programmes. Going forward, we also really want to become engaged with more sustainability communities across Ontario. And one of the programmes we're engaged with right now is we're working with Sustainability for Eastern Ontario, where we're, we have a Trillium grant for that as well, and we're, basically, the programme is to develop, provide workshops for organisations that are nonprofit that want to improve their governance, learn about how to fundraise, so it's a great opportunity for nonprofit organisations in Kingston. And going forward, we also want to engage much more in projects where we can actually measure our target, our progress on sustainability in our community. And one example is the Sustainability, the Green Economy Collective, which we received a Trillium grant for in the amount of $150,000 to launch the programme, and essentially, it's a target-based reduction programme. It's to help local businesses develop greenhouse reduction plans that are based on realistic targets.
Thirty seconds.
Oh, sorry.
Thirty seconds.
Anyway, so those are some of the things we've been doing, and I'll pass it back for Rob.
I'll be very quick, obviously. So we've taken the last couple of months to do some evaluations. We work with city staffs and senior people. We're making a few course corrections. We're going to work more with strategic partners. We're going to have a climate focus with COLAB. We're going to celebrate and communicate the successes of our own community better, and these are things we want to do, and we're looking for your support to move forward for another three years.
Thank you. Councillor Neil.
Yes, thank you. In reading the report and the recommendation that's come forward from staff, I saw one of the recommendations is for an audited financial statement, and often, in other contexts with other organisations, we have talked a lot about transparency and accountability. Other agencies we fund come with a budget for outside agencies when we do the budget. Would your organisation have any reservations about establishing that as a routine like other organisations that receive ongoing city funding?
We're completely in support of that. We feel there are city taxpayer dollars at play, and it's important that the public and yourselves have confidence that the money is being well spent. There is a board, but with also with the third-party auditing, it makes a lot of sense as well.
Thank you very much. That was the correct answer. Thank you.
Councillor O'Sanator.
Thank you, Your Worship, and congratulations on getting that Trillium grant, because those are hard to get. For the proposed budget, like of revenue and expenses that are in there, rent is $23,000. I know right now you're at 183 Sidon Street, and it says something that you might want to consider, is that like maybe changing locations? And if so, like where do you think it would be better located?
We like the current location because it's right downtown. It's accessible by public transit. It's, we're doing the Sidonham Revive project right there. There's a lot of benefits to the location. It's also an expensive location being right downtown as well. So we expect in the next year, subject to extended funding, to spend some time thinking about where that location could be. Maybe we'll stay where we are, but it is an expensive location, so we have to weigh out the pros and cons, if you will.
We're also looking at perhaps partnering with another organisation to help reduce the overhead costs.
They can kind of, to share space possibly then. I know that you have $1,000 for forums, and London now has an excellent forum. It's called the London Environmental Network, and they have movies that they show in the library, and so that could be something to look into. My last question is with regard to a type of scorecard or report card, so to speak. So Peterborough, their sustainable Peterborough Plan, they actually do have a report card, and I know that Keef is doing a session this fall that might be looking as one of their things for the next three years or so, is an environmental scorecard? And I'm just wondering if maybe you could provide the information for the other pillars to contribute to an overall sustainable report card? Last September, there was a big summary of Sustainable Kingston, and they had the makings of a report card in there. The report was really long, so maybe you could just keep working on that into a condensed version. So if Keef does the environmental section, would Sustainable Kingston like to put together the pieces for the other pillars of economic, social, and...
Cultural.
Cultural. Thank you.
I thought you had a foreword there. When we did some strategic sessions with senior city staff, the board identified that we really should have a scorecard, so we 100% agree with the idea. As we go forward, working with some potential staff in the future, we hope to create such a thing. One of the other things we plan to do, there's 39 key performance indicators in the Sustainable Kingston Plan. We're going to try to focus on a smaller group of them so that we can make more significant progress. So that'd be part of that KPI or the scorecard.
Councillor McLaren.
Thank you. Could you explain how it is that your course corrections have fit in with the council's strategic plan?
Absolutely. I think that's been one of the benefits of working with senior staff in the last couple of months, and is that we're now aware of the, this council's livable, smart, livable city vision, which we completely feel is very consistent with sustainability. It's really the same thing. So we are going forward, we're going to have, you already have a councillor on our board. We are also looking forward to having a city staff person. That was one of the recommendations that we've developed. And that'll tie the council and the city right into the lifeblood of the organisation so that we fully integrate your vision. In a way, you should think of Sustainable Kingston as your ambassadors for your vision to carry forward what you're trying to accomplish for the city. We're here to serve you from that perspective. So that's how we'll be, some of the changes we'll be making to better integrate the new vision into our vision.
And could you also mention a little bit about COLAB? You mentioned it in the last few seconds of your speech, and how it benefits the city?
Sure. So as I mentioned, COLAB is about helping businesses develop a greenhouse gas reduction plan based on very realistic targets. The programme was first developed in Waterloo and has been very successful there. They've, in the few years that they've had the programme, they've reduced greenhouse gases, what's equivalent to taking 12,000 cars off the road. So it's, in terms of the benefits to the city, it really supports the city's climate action plan. It also provides, in terms of for businesses, the fuel cost savings make them more profitable. Because it's a network of organisations across Ontario, there's many benefits in terms of resources, tools that will help us launch the programme, so we're not alone in this. It's been done before, so we can use, benefit from the experience previously. I believe the city is going to become an honorary member of our Green Economy Collective, and so there's lots of benefits for sure.
Councillor Allen.
Thank you, Your Worship. Through you, you mentioned some of the events that you do on an annual basis here in the city, and you have a modest budget, and the, my question is, do those events contribute to the achievement of the goal of the Sustainable Kingston Plan? Or do they, do you find that they can be a distraction from that? Like, are they a help to your organisation strategically, or are they potentially a distraction from getting out there, making partners, achieving those goals, measuring those performance indicators?
Yeah, that's a really good question. I think in our first few years, we were very focused on building awareness of Sustainable Kingston, getting the word out to the community about who we are and what our mandate is. I think there's many benefits in those events in that they do help to build awareness and educational opportunities in the city, but certainly going forward, we really want to focus on developing partners within the community that will help us identify what those measurable targets should be and how we can achieve them. So I think that's very important going forward.
Thank you, and I have one more question, and that's just, looking at the budget here, it speaks to, here it comes, it speaks to increasing revenues from sponsorships as in your plan, and I'm wondering if you're currently achieving those targets, or if they're stretch goals in a sense as you, as you want to grow? Like, how difficult, like sponsorships can be like grants where they, you can't be sure you're going to get them, but there they are in your budget. So I want to be sure that you've got success in achieving those sponsorships. So if you could just share with us some of those successes, that would be great.
Right. So, for example, Kingston Fest was our last event in the fall. A bit over 1,000 people come. That gives an opportunity for local businesses who want to reach that community of people. It's an excellent sponsorship opportunity. A company I know very well was happy to sponsor it. And those are the kinds of things where we, as a separate organisation from the city, are able to put forward some kind of sponsorship options. We're very comfortable that any events that we hold can be offset cost-wise through sponsorships. And we, I think we're over, close to $30,000 in sponsorship in our last year, and it was like $10,000 the year before. So I think we've developed that awareness in the community. We've got a bit of cachet, people know who we are, and we've got a place to build. So that's why we're confident that the budget number in there is achievable.
Thank you.
Dippen Mayor Stroud.
Thank you, Your Worship. Through you and the talking stick, just a question about something that's already been mentioned about your location and considering a cheaper location, and I applaud you for the things you already mentioned, for example, close to transit, and I would say that, I would ask that you consider the, all the implications of a different location if it's not as central, because it would mean a higher carbon footprint for anyone that is coming to your office, especially employees. That needs to be factored in, that maybe the extra cost is actually less than the increased environmental cost if you were to move somewhere that people would have to drive to more. Just thought I'd mention that. I am sure you would, you would, you would take that into account. Thank you.
And it is a bit of a complex question because of things that, carbon footprint is one, the sustainability should be for all citizens, including those who don't have a car and don't have access to, to things like that. So that's why we like that location as well. It's one, some of the feedback we've heard directly in some of our public meetings is that the, we need to ensure that we're reaching not just the wealthy, but we're reaching the entire community. So it's a very good point.
Councillor Hutchison.
Thank you, Your Worship. Through you and the talking stick, the, no talking stick, well, they're supposed to...
No, no talking stick tonight.
No talking stick. Doesn't mean we can't talk. Poor talking stick, it's taken a long. So in the report, it talks about Sustainable Kingston leveraging sustainable initiatives. And looking at your budget and that you've got two staff planned, I'm wondering what leverage means in this situation, and what kind of projects you have in mind that your organisation could leverage? Usually leverage means that you have X amount of value or dollars, and you're expecting to get more out of it, X plus Y, or something like that. So I'm just kind of curious how that leveraging concept works in this context.
I have a very great example in the COLAB franchise, if you will, because we've got an executive director and a plan coordinator planned as part of this. That gives us the foundation, if you will. So we've got a building, we've got a website, we've got access to computers, and with the funding that the city provides, then we can take that, we apply it to Trillium, and we are successful in getting additional funds to hire two more people, who are then focused on the climate and economic pillars, if you will, because they are, they'll be focused on helping local businesses reduce their carbon footprints and reduce their costs at the same time. That's just an example, one example. We're also looking at working with critical partners, strategic partners, where we, for example, would have, make our boardroom available, so they can borrow it. If they're a small organisation, they can come in and use our facilities. So that's another way of leveraging. It's not a cash leverage in that case, it's more of a resource leverage. And I think as we try to mobilise volunteers more, again, those, those that we can leverage your resources into something greater as a result. Did I answer your question?
Yes, I think there's probably more to come, but thank you.
Okay, seeing no other questions, thank you very much. Are there any other delegations to be added tonight? Councillor McLaren.
Thank you. I may move a motion, seconded by Mr. Councillor Neil, that bylaw 2012-1, Clause 11.4 and 11.5 be waived to add a delegation of Dr. Kiran Moore, AMOH, of Kingston Frontenac Athletics and Addington Public Health, to speak on new motion number one with respect to fentanyl abuse prevention.
Okay, so there's a motion to add a fourth delegation, requires two-thirds vote of council. So it's been moved by Councillor McLaren, seconded by Councillor Neil, so we'll call the vote. And that carries. And that carries. Are there any other delegations to add? Okay, councillor Neil?
Just a point of order. Um, councillor O'Sannick should be shown as absent rather than voting nay since she was in conflict.
Was councillor O'Sannick signed out? Okay. So that's what happens when you leave without signing out. Okay. Okay, are there any other delegations to add? Councillor Hutchison.
Thank you, your worship. Um, I would ask, um, council that clauses eleven point four and eleven point five, the City of Kingston procedural bylaw twenty ten dash one, as amended, be waived in order to allow a delegation from the Kings Court Community Association. Lucinda Bray, Matthew Gaventer and Scott Ben speak to report number sixty seven, clause two, partnership with Limestone District School Board and the Kingston-Frontenac Library Board, Kings Court Library Branch, seconded by councillor Neil.
Okay, so we will call the vote. Seeing no other hands, so we have two additional delegations. So next we will invite, uh, Dr. Kiran Moore, uh, who will be speaking to council regarding new motion number one.
Mister Mayor, councillor McLaren, fellow councillor, other councillors and members of the community, thank you very much for the opportunity to discuss, uh, Patch for Patch Programme, which is a community safety initiative. And in case you're not aware, uh, over the last 10 years, there's been, been a significant rise in deaths in Ontario from narcotics. And for the most part, these are prescribed medications that have been diverted to the street, sold on the street, and have led to addiction or morbidity, mortality in our communities. It's a significant health issues and in our local area, there's been a doubling over the last three years of visits to the emergency departments and as well admissions to our hospitals. So it's a significant cost to our communities. And we've had, uh, one death a month in KFLA region from their accidental deaths from narcotics. Um, we have a shared community responsibility to decrease these deaths from opiates for our children, our family members. And one community safety initiative is called the Patch for Patch Programme. It's a partnership amongst P's, the police, the pharmacists, our patients and our physicians. And the goal of it is to decrease the availability of a drug called fentanyl. Fentanyl is typically dispatched or prescribed as a patch which lasts around 72 hours. It's a highly potent and addictive drug. It's a hundred times more potent than morphine. And it is getting diverted into the street because it's, uh, so potent and so highly addictive. It's typically prescribed and then diverted, uh, for, uh, profit. One way to decrease the availability of fentanyl is to have a Patch for Patch Programme. So if a physician prescribes fentanyl to a patient, the patient must then, uh, once they're dispensed the fentanyl, bring those, uh, patches back to get any further patches. That's the only way we can think of, and this is a, a, a policy that's been developed by physicians and, um, the police and pharmacists to decrease the availability of this highly potent drug. Fentanyl deaths are on the rise in Ontario. There's one death every three days from fentanyl and it's escalating in British Columbia and Alberta, and we don't want to see the same problem faced here. So we're asking council to consider supporting a motion that would promote the Patch for Patch Programme, not just locally, but also, uh, to our provincial government, which is, uh, has a motion and second reading at Queen's Park to address this issue. Education alone of physicians and pharmacists, I don't think will be enough. We must actually mandate, uh, this type of programme because we're in an epidemic, we have a rapid rise in deaths, and I don't think anyone in this room wants to see anyone in our community, uh, dying from these highly potent narcotics. So, uh, thank you very much for the opportunity to address this issue. I'd be welcome to take any questions.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Deputy Mayor Stroud.
Uh, thank you, your worship, and, uh, thank you for your presentation, Dr. Moore. Uh, very, uh, well put, and I'm also very familiar with the drug that you're mentioning. Being a registered nurse, I, I apply fentanyl patches on my patients from time to time. And, uh, I know what, uh, you're saying, essentially you bring back the empties, uh, before you can get a new set, uh, from, from your prescription to, to prevent those empties from, uh, either getting used themselves, uh, because there's still some drug remaining in them, or to prevent the whole patch going out, because if it's sold, it can't come back as an empty. Now, I understand the logic, and the only thing I'm wondering about is what, uh, in the initiative, and I've read some of the literature, it doesn't talk very much about, uh, mitigating the, uh, the extra, um, uh, time it would take for a patient to, to do this. Like, uh, how, uh, how would we help patients, especially with mobility issues or, or maybe mental health issues or mental acuity issues, of keeping track of their empty patches in a safe manner so that they can't actually be stolen or they're not attracting a different kind of illicit activity in that way? I was wondering if you could comment on that?
Yeah, well, those are excellent questions. First, we have to make sure that, that the right patient is getting the right drug at the right dose. And I think, uh, we, we have to probably decrease the amount of availability of this drug. It's a, it, it may not be the right drug for many different patients, especially those with mental health issues, uh, due, due to its highly addictive nature and its sedate, sedating nature. The thing about the patches, as you sort of mentioned, around seventy, it's a slow-release drug, so seventy to eighty percent of the drug is still accessible and available when, once you've taken the patch after, after three days. And we don't want that getting diverted to the street, so it's important to collect those on an ongoing basis and return them so they don't get diverted, because they, people chew these, they snort them, they inject them, uh, and, uh, they have multiple illicit purposes for them. So there will be some issues on how to return it and how to help people, and I think that's up to the pharmacists and the physicians to negotiate with their patients, make sure you're on the right drug at the right dose and that you're aware of the harms of this drug and that we have a safe means of returning it. I, I think that we'll have to leave that to the physician and patient and pharmacist to negotiate safety first for every individual in our community.
Councillor McLaren.
Thank you. May I ask, why Kingston? Why here today, right now? What's the particular problem here in Kingston?
We do have a safe, livable city and, uh, one of the problems, though, is we have a high prescribing rate, so that's partly the physicians in our community. We have a high prescribing rate for narcotics, uh, relative to other urban centres. And there's a direct correlation. When you have a high prescribing rate, there's also a high death rate due to accidental overdose or diversion of drugs. So in our community, uh, one way of tackling this is a Patch for Patch Programme. And also, I'm trying to educate all physicians about appropriate prescribing, uh, decreasing the availability of narcotics in general in our community and being very specific about what councillor Strode, uh, mentioned about the right drug, right dose, right patient, um, and so that we can decrease the availability of narcotics in general. It should be for the right patient, you know, clearly for cancer pain, clearly for those that absolutely need it, but we have to be very careful of the prescribing of these drugs in our community. And, uh, I mean, the opportunity to speak with you today allows, uh, me to raise it in our medical community and our community at large. We have to do better as patients, as physicians, as pharmacists, as community members. So thank you for that.
Okay, seeing no other questions, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And our final delegation this evening is, uh, members of the Kings Court Community Association, who will speak to council in regards to clause two, report number sixty seven.
Thank you, Mister Mayor, councillors. My name is Lucinda Bray and I live in Kings Court Community. And while I was disappointed to see that the Kings Court Library is going to close sooner than we had expected, uh, I am nonetheless pleased and encouraged to see the results of, uh, collaboration efforts between the Limestone Board, city staff and the library board, in, in order to develop, and I'm quoting from the discussion that came from the June meeting here, uh, "in order to create and manage shared space for the purpose of serving both students and residents through the potential for library resources and community meeting space." And, uh, so I am looking forward to seeing the ideas that come out of that ongoing process. And all I would want to say to the groups involved in that consultation is to remember that the definition of library services today goes way beyond just borrowing books. And I think it, I would want to make sure that the consultative process identifies who are the current users of the Kings Court Library and what do they use the library for, in order that those factors and those needs can be included in the shared facility. So as I say, I support the ongoing process of, uh, uh, seeking collaborative solutions to the loss of our library, and I wish you the very best of luck in that process. Thank you.
Mayor Patterson and councillors, while this motion happened very quickly and we didn't have a chance to consult with a general meeting, the Kings Court Community Association has been conscious, conscious of the risk to the, uh, library branch and discussed it over preceding months. I was mandated by the association to, uh, it, to, to sit in the branch, uh, library and try to recruit, uh, regular users into a friends committee. Our goal was specifically to look at the services that were essential to the community and search about, out alternative ways to deliver them, not to block the opening of the Rideau Heights branch. I'd asked the library's senior staff for permission to do that, but I didn't hear back from them on it. So the following observations are based on personal perceptions and discussions with, uh, some of other users of the library. It's rather than, rather than hard evidence. The further context of these comments is the reality of Kings Court. It is a working-class district. It has fewer college graduates, for example, than any other neighbourhood other than Rideau Heights. The cost of housing is intermediate between Rideau Heights and Strathcona. It has significant pockets of low-income households and social housing. It has older housing, uh, resided by less mobile older citizens, some has pockets of older housing or, or degree of older housing with, um, pockets of old, of, uh, mobile old, less mobile older citizens, as well as an increasing influx of young families. Um, while library services to a broad range of users is valuable, one needs to recognise that there are those users who will be readily able to access Calvin Park or Rideau Heights branches. Others will not. Council has a moral responsibility, um, and duty to ensure they are informed of the kinds of users and uses current, so that no one is left out. In our city, no one should be dispensable. Let me give one specific. Regular users, uh, probably would notice that the use of the computers has multiplied with the opening of the Frontenac Mental Health, uh, residential buildings. Yet the plan is to save costs of stocking the new library branch with computers from the Kings Court Branch. Some of us, for another example, some of us have perceived the frequency of library, uh, frequenting, frequenting of the library by families and children of colour or of cultural attire. Perhaps, uh, perhaps they're, they're renting the low-cost housing adjacent to the library, perhaps not. But it has become a cultural resource so anticipated by the city...
Thirty seconds.
Whether a library or otherwise, don't leave these people out. In a moment, uh, okay. I want to finish my dialogue with you with this observation. Planners unconnected with the daily life of Kings Court are designated to meet and decide on what is needed and how it will operate. We would like you to amend the motion, uh, to include us. We are the citizens using the proposed services. We know what we need. I don't mean the Kings Court Community Association. I mean the broad spectrum of library users of the branch. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions for the delegation? Seeing none, thank you. So we have no further delegations. We have no briefings this evening. Are there any petitions? Councillor O'Sannick.
Thank you, your worship. I'd like to present a petition of two hundred and three signatures from the Westbrook Meadows Residents Association through the clerk's office to planning staff. And the petition reads, "We, the undersigned, urge our leaders of the City of Kingston to act now too. Number one, stipulate that secondary suites require one of the two suites be owner-occupied. We believe that the secondary suite programme can be a positive influence on a neighbourhood. We also believe that good neighbourhoods are formed when they are composed of long-term residents. By allowing only one, by allowing only owner-occupied secondary suites, the important long-term relationship is established between the secondary suite homes and the surrounding neighbours. Number two, require homes to meet the housing style in, of the zone in which they are placed. This means in an R1, single-family neighbourhood, the builds would look like single-family homes. This appears to be the style now used in all other neighbourhoods we visited. Do not allow duplex or other multi-unit-looking structures and to include external requirements such as fire escapes. In an R2 where multi-family builds look like duplexes or semis are allowed, then duplex or multi-unit style build could be allowed since it does not, since it does fit in the area housing. Number three, we recommend that the city establish an annual recertification process for owner-occupied secondary suites, as is required in many other Ontario cities. During recertification and with proof of low or moderate income rentals being supported in one suite of a secondary suite dwelling, the owner would be eligible for tax relief for meeting the provincial objectives of the secondary suite plan up to the stated full rebate over five years. If owner-occupied status ceases, purchased by investor or commercial entity or the owner moves out, the secondary suite is then decertified by the city and the home may not be rented as two units until one of them becomes owner-occupied. A reasonable fee would be charged to make administration of the programme self-supporting, so Kingston taxpayers will not end up paying individuals to make a profit. And number four, an immediate suspension of further duplex-style housing in R1 zones pending review. Thank you, your worship."
Thank you. So you just hand that to the clerk? Are there any other petitions to present tonight?
Okay, seeing none. Motions of condolences, moved by councillor Neil, seconded by councillor O'Sannick. "The condolences of city council in the City of Kingston be shared with the many friends and family of Mary Fleming, who passed away recently after an extended illness. Mary was a long-time community activist who worked diligently on affordable housing, childcare and environmental issues. She served three terms on Kingston City Council, working tirelessly and passionately on anti-poverty and many other key civic issues. In her time with the Ontario Ministry of Health and Long-Term Care, she was the director of the primary healthcare branch. In the words of the current director, Phil Graham, Mary was the driving force behind many of Ontario's primary healthcare reform efforts. She led the creation of primary care programmes and initiatives with a steadfast commitment to doing what was right, while keeping a wicked sense of humour, a strong sense of ethics and an unwavering commitment to public service. She will be dearly missed." Moved by Mayor Patterson, seconded by deputy mayor Stroud, that "the condolences of Kingston City Council be extended to the family, friends and former co-workers of Daryl Purdon, who passed away on June seventeenth, twenty fifteen, in his fifty-eighth year. Daryl retired in twenty thirteen as an assistant supervisor, arenas in the Recreation and Leisure Services Department. He was a valued and dedicated employee with over thirty-six years of service with the City of Kingston. Daryl made a positive contribution to the department and will be greatly missed. Our thoughts are with his family during this difficult time." Moved by Mayor Patterson, seconded by deputy mayor Stroud, that "the condolences of Kingston City Council be extended to Sheila Kidd, Director of Transportation Services, on the passing of her mother, Marie Bernice Hickey, on July sixth, twenty fifteen. Our thoughts are with Sheila and her family during this difficult time." Motions of congratulations, moved by Mayor Patterson, seconded by deputy mayor Stroud, that "the congratulations of Kingston City Council be extended to councillor Ryan Bohm and his wife Jaclyn on the birth of their daughter Alexa on July fourteenth," that was this morning, "weighing seven pounds, eight ounces, congratulations." Moved by Mayor Patterson, seconded by deputy mayor Stroud, that "the congratulations of Kingston City Council be extended to Kingston's Will Cruthers for winning gold in the rowing men's Coxas Four final on July thirteenth, twenty fifteen, at the twenty fifteen Pan Am Games. Congratulations to Will and his teammates." And with the, uh, permission of council, uh, just, uh, watching the news this evening, if, uh, can be permitted to add one more, uh, moved by Mayor Patterson, seconded by deputy mayor Stroud, that "the congratulations of Kingston City Council be extended to Kingston's Rob Gibson for winning gold in the rowing men's quadruple skulls at the twenty fifteen Pan Am Games. Congratulations." Congratulations to Rob and his teammates. So, we will call the question?
And that carries. So, we have no deferred motions this evening. So, I will next ask for report number 66 from the CAO.
Moved by councillor Turner, seconded by councillor O'Sannick. The report number 66 from the Chief Administrative Officer consented, received and adopted.
So, there are a number of clauses, starting at A and running all the way to clause N. Would anyone like anything separated? Councillor O'Sannick.
Thank you, your worship. Can I please separate J, K and L?
J, K and L. Councillor Neil.
E, E please. E. Yep.
Okay, so seeing no other separations, we'll first vote on the remaining clauses. So, that would be clauses, A, award of contract, one-track driven sidewalk plough; B, award of contract for on-call towing services; C, award of contract, fire station alerting; D, upgrade public safety emergency response paging system, single-source purchase; F, approval of housekeeping amendments to bylaw 2005-255, a bylaw to delegate the authority for the processing and approval of temporary highway closures pursuant to section 42 of the Ontario Municipal Act; G, approval of housekeeping amendments to bylaw 99-174, a bylaw to establish provisions for right-of-way cuts within any city road allowance or public place; H, right turn on red light ban at the intersection of Union Street and University Avenue; I, signing authority to enter into an agreement with the Ministry of Transportation Ontario for the operation of traffic signals on Division Street at Highway 401; M, approval for the release of agreements from title regarding organic waste; and N, authorised request for agreement with the Ontario Ministry of Transportation for bylaw enforcement investigations. So, we will call the vote. And that carries. Next, we have item E, extension of contract to supply and installation of shelters for Kingston Transit. Councillor Neil.
Yes, understandably, Ms. Kidd isn't here, so perhaps somebody could just take this question under advisement. I've received several calls about the lack of replacement shelter near the CNIB, just across the street from Giant Tiger and the one that serves the express farther, farther down. If, if somebody on staff can look into that and just get back to me with information about that?
So...
Or if staff can answer it now?
So, I think that at a principle, that's a little bit far removed from this particular recommendation. So, I think what I'll do is we'll just leave that, if we can, just a note for staff to get back to you on. Because this, this recommendation doesn't actually talk about those...
I did see the Commissioner's hand go up, but that's fine.
Understand it, that's okay.
Understandable.
So, we will call the, we'll call the vote. Item E. And that carries. Item J, award of request for proposals, professional engineering services for Highway 15 municipal class environmental assessment. Councillor O'Sannick.
Thank you, your worship. I know that the recommendation is to go with H, to award it to HDR Corporation. It was ranked number one, but I don't see the scores. And sometimes we have the scores and there's a $100 difference between the number one ranking and the second ranking. And HDR is also the third highest bid, so I'm just wondering how much of a difference it was between the number two ranked, which is BT Engineering and HDR Corporation, since there is that $100,000 difference?
Yes, Mr. Keach.
Yeah, through your worship, I don't have the scoring here either, and if the councillor's interested, we can talk a little bit about that. But as you have seen in the report, it outlines how we do go about the scoring and prices valued at basically 25%. One of the things that when we look at consulting contracts is the work plan and the amount of time that is being put into it and then weigh that against what we feel the effort needs to be. And weighing all that out, in this case, the recommendation was that we go with HDR, realising that they are sort of mid-pack or a bit higher, but the feeling was that the value that we would get for that would well exceed the lower prices.
Thank you very much.
Councillor Allen.
Thank you. I also reached out to staff when I read the report because it wasn't, I didn't feel like I had enough information to understand how the decision was made and move forward. And staff sent me an email with, and I'll forward that to you, councillor O'Sannick. But, and so I appreciate that openness from staff about how that works. I would like to see that openness in the original report. I think our stakeholders across the city deserve to know how we go about choosing these contracts. They are our dollars and our city's dollars. And it wasn't too hard to get that information with a quick email and I don't think it would have been too hard to include it. So, just a mental note to try and, we do like those details in these reports, so thank you.
Thank you. So, we will call the vote. This is on item J. And that carries. Item K, Sustainable Kingston Plan Implementation. Councillor O'Sannick.
Thank you, your worship. When we look at the three-year operating period budget, we have different events there, but there's no money allocated for Pitchin' Kingston. And I remember the days, I've been doing Pitchin' Kingston every year since being on council where we could get all the bags, easy access by going to Lake Ontario Park and Public Works was there handing out bags and we could get as many bags as possible. And it seems that now that we've handed it off, you know, to Sustainable Kingston, it's more downtown-focused. If you want to do Pitchin' Kingston, you know, out in the suburbs where, you know, some of us live, you have to come downtown or if you, like, there wasn't even a Tim Hortons the week before Pitchin' that was going to be handing out garbage bags for Pitchin' in the West End. It was the day before. It was suddenly added and they gave you a quota of like five bags per person. And I don't know, I just think we could get more people across the city if we try to do the distribution better. And I'm just wondering, like, a question to staff is, can we help Sustainable Kingston more with Pitchin' Kingston in subsequent years?
Who would like to, to take that? Mr. McClatchy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and through you. We're happy to bring up the particulars of that event with Sustainable Kingston Corporation and look for ways to improve its effectiveness. And if that means potentially expanding their sponsorship to, to other organisations to have the resources to do that, then, then we can examine that for sure.
Thank you. I did some research for this year's Pitchin' and it seems like other municipalities are still right in there, really involved with Pitchin'. And I just feel that for us, we've just given it to a third party, in this case, Sustainable Kingston, and said, "Okay, do it yourselves." And, you know, they don't even have any money budgeted for it. So, in terms of advertising and, you know, helping get those garbage bags out to get more people doing a roadside, which are just awful, you know, then, and really need the litter pickup, I think any help the city can still provide, Sustainable Kingston should be done that way. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Neil.
Yes, thank you very much. I really appreciated the details in the report that accompanied this. It addressed, kind of established a working criteria that addresses most of the concerns that I would have brought forward. So, I really appreciate the identification of those issues. I know, in the realm of things, this is an external agency funded by the city and other external boards and agencies, the expectation is that they come at budget time to the city. And I know $130,000 isn't 3.2 million dollars budget, but I still think that, that our due diligence should be that we expect a briefing and expect a budget. And now that we're requesting an audited budget, I would, I would hope that they could also be included in that invitation at budget time to come. Perhaps the Treasurer or Commissioner or the CAO could address that.
Cao Hunt.
Through you, we can certainly have a presentation through the Commissioner's budget process. This is a service agreement that is administered under that. It's a little different than external agencies in terms of having submitted their budgets to a board and then comes through to council for a request, but we'll take that under advisement and we'll invite Sustainable Kingston to, to describe some of the components, or the Commissioner will describe the components of the budget as part of that budget on annual basis.
Commissioner Beach.
We've actually tried to separate the service level agreement a little bit from the budget process in that they're going to be required to submit an annual report, which would come before the budget process, so that we would actually have the annual report prior to preparing the budget and then we would have that information would be presented to council and then your budget would be approved after that for their next year's budget.
Could that conceivably, and I'm quite, I understand the rationale for that, when they do that preliminary pre-budget submission, is it possible for there to be a briefing to council so that we could, we can see? I mean, I've, I've heard about leveraging and other monies that come into the organisation that create, but all of that is frankly kind of news if, if you're not the one councillor appointed to that board. So, I'm, I'm, I don't mind if it isn't at budget time, but I think it would, council would, I know I would, but I assume council would appreciate that kind of briefing that gave us that, that information.
Commissioner Beach.
So, we have done that in the past and we'll continue to do that and you'll receive the information prior to us submitting the budget to you so that you'll be able to give whatever direction in terms of the budget submission prior to us bringing that to council. So, we will bring a report to council on an annual basis.
I guess then, I just wonder how comprehensive the information, can we, can we actually see what other projects they've done that have gotten external funding, what, what leveraging kind of things, how much money they've raised through sponsorship and partnerships, that kind of thing that we hear, hear about, but we've never seen what, how those have actually, what those things have accomplished?
Yes, we can make sure that's in the annual report.
Thank you.
Councillor Hutchinson.
Yes, thank you, through you, your worship. The, I do like the general direction and tenure, tenor of this report. It calls for greater supervisory governance, more accountability and an emphasis on outcomes, which I think is well-needed. I am a little concerned, perhaps ironically, in a way, given my first comments, about the, the budget. And I can understand why staff set it up the way they have and have to show progress in the first year and so on. I think that's good. But when they were talking about this, why I raised the question earlier about leverage and it's not a great deal of money. And, and those are, the examples given are not earth-shaking, shall we say, not, there's small, there's small gains to be had there and we need to make bigger strides than that. So, part of it, I just wanted to raise in terms, raise that, that concern and that, that we try to find different ways to leverage the monies that we are putting in and to get outcomes that they indicated were happening in Waterloo and other maybe green energy developments or things along that line. Also, when we have situations in here where it says the proposed, cost of space from the proposed may be deducted in whole and apart from the annual contribution made by the city, I'm all for saving money, but that kind of allowing, that kind of dictate can sometimes undermine the very good organisation that you're trying to get to do better and be leaving them with less. And so, it's just, I'm just a bit concerned about that because I want this to work, okay? That's why. And I just want, I thought I'd raise that with staff. I'm sure they're thinking about these things, but I think it's good that it be raised. And finally, I'm wondering what the most, we talk about the model and all the advantages of the model and so on, but what's the most common model that is used by municipalities to try to achieve these, these objectives? I'm sure we must have looked at them at some point. We say we're reviewing them here in pages 68 to 69. So, I just want to know how to think about this if we don't get the results that staff are looking for. Thank you.
Commissioner Beach.
So, in terms of the models, I think it is something that is evolving in terms of the actual integrated community sustainability plans. There's not a lot that are currently active and are out there still being implemented in other communities. So, there are probably as many different ways of actually implementing these types of community plans as there are communities. There, there are a small number that have set up a separate corporation. We're one of the few that are doing that. So, I would say that's, that's fairly unique. Most frequently, you would see it being part of the city organisation, but we, we think that for Kingston, in order to get that community buy-in, that the, the aspect of having it at arms-length, having a separate not-for-profit, allowing them the leverage to look at community partners in different ways than if it were a committee of council, for instance, is a benefit that's worth the risks of going ahead with this model. So, so I would say that right now, you know, a range, the, the model of, of the, the community partners actually contributing is something that it has, we're looking at that in a number of other types of organisations that are doing that now. So, certainly will, will help Sustainable Kingston in terms of keeping the interest of other organisations and having them involved in the implementation of the plan is the next step.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Allen.
Thank you, your worship and through you. This is, I too appreciate the staff report here and its emphasis on accountability and governance. We, we want to know and we want to, I think we want to see more from this. We're all looking to see a champion in our community in this plan and in this organisation. And, you know, I'm not hearing that from people. I'm not hearing that from anyone, really. And I, I've been involved with Sustainable Kingston and I think there's great potential there for other community organisations to get behind it, to collaborate with it, to drive forward. But that traction, for whatever reason, just hasn't happened. And it's been very disappointing. And, and I'm hoping that with these sort of strategies outlined by both the board and by staff here, that we can see some action in the next year. I'm hoping that perhaps when Sustainable Kingston needs a hand, perhaps... I'm hoping that perhaps when Sustainable Kingston needs a hand, perhaps we can provide them with some advice from strategic communications or some of our other assets that are useful or would be useful to an investment from council. I just wanted to share that with the rest of council where I felt things were. I want folks to know that I want this to work, but there's only so long that we can sit there hoping for it to work, and we need to see some of that traction and action in the community, and I would say in the partners in the community that we keep speaking about in these reports. I think the community members are there, there's quite a few of them, but they haven't seen our business and not-for-profit and university partners, educational partners, we've got lots of educational institutions here really working with this, and I think we could all benefit from better partnerships here. Thank you.
Thank you. So, with that, we will call the vote. And that carries. Item L is the City of Kingston Arts Fund 2015 Grant Recommendations. Councillor O'Sannick?
Thank you, your worship. This recommendation is for the 2015 grant, and I just want to commend the Kingston Arts Council for their advertising and communication. So, we all got the impact report, and this is the great one-page summary that I'm so happy that they showed, because since the inception of the program in 2007, they're summarizing every organization that has received that $500,000 funding for operating on project grants, and I hope they continue it, because I think this one-page summary is a fantastic idea. So, thanks very much.
Thank you. So, we will call the vote. And that carries. Report number sixty-seven from the C A O.
Moved by Councillor Stroud, seconded by Councillor Allen. The report number sixty-seven from the C A O recommend be received and adopted clause by clause.
So, there are two clauses. Number one is issuance of debentures under existing loan agreements and new loan application to Ontario Infrastructure and Lands Corporation. We will call the vote. Councillor Hutchinson, did you have a question?
Sorry, this is just for number one?
This is just number one.
Okay, I just wanted to be sure. Thanks.
Still two people to vote. Again, this is just for clause number one. And that carries. Number two, partnership with the Limestone District School Board and Kingston Frontenac Public Library Board, Kingscourt Library Branch. Councillor Hutchinson?
On this, I will first say that my, the last clause, I think, first of all, let me say, I don't think anybody, I think lots of people are really happy to see the library branch in the Rita Heights go forward, and I'm sure there's all kinds of advantages, both in terms of logistics and, well, not just both, logistics and services, and saving money to have it in as part of the Rita Heights community hub, and I'm fully supportive of that. The, I'm desperately trying to find my spot here. Let me just say that I do want to give emphasis to the last clause, which talks about working with the Limestone District School Board and the Public Library Board to report back on library service options in the Kingscourt area. I just want to give my support to the Kings, the Community Association that spoke earlier about their concerns about maintaining library services in some form, and hopefully, according to what I've heard from school trustees, in some relation, positive relation with the Limestone District School Board. And we keep talking about collaborating with them, and we do, it's an ongoing thing, but we've talked about doing more, and I hope this is one of the more. And so, I just want to encourage staff that this is not a small thing to some of us, this is the big thing, or it's part of this bigger thing. And we've constantly on this council and previous councils supported the Rita Heights development, I don't think anybody's backing off of that. The, it's a bit late, anyway, but this is a different, this is a different area, this is a different community, it's separated from Rita Heights in many ways, and I'd like to see that go, we get something positive out of this. The school board feels, talking to a couple of trustees, that while this is an important thing, they have nothing against the general motion here, that they've had, that this particular report does not address their concerns in terms of collaboration and working out what can be done by the three parties, the library board, the school board, and the city. And I'm just wondering if there's anything else that staff could tell us about that, what's involved in that last clause?
Who would like to take that? Commissioner Hurdle?
Thank you, through Mr. Mayor, and we do have tonight Patricia Henwright, the Chief Librarian, as well as Claudette Richardson, the Chair of the Library Board that are here, that may want to add to my answers. I just want to point out that we've worked really closely with the staff of the Limestone District School Board on this report, so I'm not quite sure where the comments are coming from, and we have definitely followed up on the presentation that was made at the Library Board on June 24th. I guess the only thing I'd like to offer to council is that there were a number of options that were presented on the June 24th in terms of future partnerships, and I'm sure that council can appreciate that it takes more than a couple of days to figure out operations of long-term services. So, we had to move fairly quickly with this particular report, because the Library Board did pass two motions. The first one was dealing with the property, and the school board does have a limited timeframe to work on its design for the school and the site, so we had to move fairly quickly with this one, and we'll be reporting back probably in the first meeting of September around other options for partnerships.
Is there anything that the Library Board wishes to add to that? No? Okay, great, thank you. Councillor Hutchinson? Okay, next on my list is Councillor Neil.
Thank you very much. A couple of things. I've been, I think, about 12 years longer on the Library Board than I've been on City Council, so I just want to remind my colleagues, like I normally do, that they're governed by the Provincial Library Act. We get to say how much money they get, they get to say how they spend it. So, clearly, they're an equal partner in this collaborative process. Just to give a little background, there was a service review done, I believe, about 12 years ago by Jim Morgenstern, a very well-known person in the public library, consultant, and it identified at the time that the least served area in, of the city, of the urban portion of the library, was indeed the northeast corner in the Heights area. So, this is an opportunity to address that, and I was at that meeting where there was a briefing from the school board, and I believe both motions that were just referenced passed unanimously at that meeting. And indeed, as, and I appreciate the Community Association's presentation, because what was approved a year and a half or two years ago had nothing addressing the potential for continued service in Kingscourt. It's the motion that got passed, and I said at the time, that's a battle we'll have to fight in three or four years, because what was passed was that the Kingscourt site would be sold, and the money from that would go towards Rita Heights, which is identified as the area with the highest need in the city. So, I reluctantly voted at that time, knowing that that was several years away. I will say that what isn't quite reflected here, and definitely wasn't reflected in the media information that was given, is that in that briefing, the Limestone District School Board said that they would work collaboratively to ensure a short term, a medium term, or a long term continuation of service at, for the Kingscourt community. Now, it's up to us collaboratively in three groups to make that so, and I look forward to that collaboration. I also want to appreciate and point out that, as I've said too many times, the curse is we can always find capital dollars, we can never seem to find operating dollars. In this report, there's a recognition that when the Rita Heights Library is fully functional, the library will need, Library Board will need more operating dollars to be able to service that. And so, at some point in time, we need to address that in our operating budget, and I'm glad that the Commissioner recognized that in the report, because too often, we build things and then afterwards go, throw our hands up and say we can't find operating dollars. And I think that that's an opportunity and a challenge for the school board, the library board, and the city to try to address the Kingscourt continued service that I believe Kingscourt community deserves. And I will just say that I got a, we, several of us got a couple of phone calls today from Councillor Holland, who is on a long-planned family vacation and received several calls concerning this issue tonight, and she called.
Thirty seconds.
Thank you. She called just to ensure that people would recognize her support for this report, and so I'd just like to mention that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Stroud, will you take the chair?
I take the chair, your worship, and I recognize you.
Thank you. I would just like to say how pleased and how excited I am by the vision of what's being presented before us tonight. We are being asked to let go of something that we have in order to grasp the potential of something much better. I think this really shows the power of partnership that we talk a lot about around this table. I'd like to commend staff, the city, the school board, and the library board to come together to create this, because what we're really talking about is this creation of community hubs, which I think we all understand is so integral and so important for the creation of a smart and livable city and building community. But the idea that we could actually create two community hubs, we could have a community hub created in Rita Heights, and we talked about the vision of that and how exciting that is, but also we have the potential to create a community hub in Kingscourt, perhaps in the location of a new secondary school, shared services and shared space. And that's the really cool part about partnership, is that when you share space, you can do more with existing dollars. So, here we could, yes, there might be some small increases we might want to talk about operating-wise, but really talking about is the opportunity to be able to do more, in this case, be able to have services in two different locations in the North End, which I think would be great. So, I'm very happy to support this and happy to see it come forward tonight. Thank you.
And you have the chair back.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that wishes to speak? With that, we will call the vote. And that carries unanimously. Report number sixty-eight from Planning Committee.
Thank you, Mayor Patterson. It's my pleasure to present report number sixty-eight. Shall I do sixty-nine as well? We have two reports this evening that I would like to present. Thank you. Pardon me? One at a time? Okay.
We'll make you stand up a second time, Councillor Shell.
Moved by Councillor Shell, seconded by Councillor George. The report number sixty-eight from the Planning Committee be received and adopted.
So, there are four clauses. Would anyone like any of them separated? So, seeing none, we will vote on them as a whole. So, Clause One is an application for zoning bylaw amendment eighty-three Durham Street. Clause Two is the central accommodation review summary and options report. Clause Three is the application for draft plan of subdivision, official plan and zoning bylaw amendment twenty-six eleven Isle of Man Road. And number four is application for zoning bylaw amendment one forty-nine Collingwood Street. Councillor Allen?
I'm sorry, may I separate item three, please?
Okay, so, we will just call the vote on items one, two, and four. Mr. Clerk, if we have that? Okay, so, we'll call the vote, but again, that's just for items one, two, and four. Okay, so, we're going to redo that? Okay, so, we'll retake the vote then, so again, this is just for items one, two, and four. And that carries. Item Three is the application for draft plan of subdivision, official plan and zoning bylaw amendment twenty-six eleven Isle of Man Road. Councillor Allen?
Thank you. I'm just separating this out of personal opinion, more than anything, we have to be careful about these kinds of developments, growing in the rural area, especially in places where it could be agricultural land, and I don't want to see too many of them cropping up. I can understand the demand for this one, but out of principle, I'll be voting against it, so, thank you.
Okay, so, we will call the vote. And that carries by a vote of nine to three. Report number sixty-nine from Planning Committee.
Thank you, Mayor Patterson. It's my pleasure to present planning report number sixty-nine. Thank you.
Moved by Councillor Shell, seconded by Councillor George. The report number sixty-nine from the Planning Committee be received and adopted.
So, there are four clauses in report sixty-nine. So there are four clauses in, uh, report sixty-nine. Any separations? So seeing none, we will vote on them. Councillor Allen? Yes?
Uh, I also have a, a separation in here. I believe it's clause... Same, same thing. I haven't pulled up that report yet. Problem with these devices is they don't come up as quickly as paper. Hold on one second.
So, so what I'll do...
That will be, uh, that's not it, actually, so I'm okay. I'm not, I don't have a separation.
You're okay? Okay, so just, so I'm gonna read through all four clauses, and if suddenly you or anybody else does want to separate them, just let me know. So Clause one is the application for zoning bylaw amendment one twenty-nine Calderwood Drive. Clause two is the application for zoning bylaw amendment one twenty-eight to one thirty-six Ontario Street and fifteen Earl Street. Clause three is the application for zoning bylaw amendment two seventeen to two nineteen University Avenue and three thirty William Street. And Clause four is an application for zoning bylaw amendment eleven thirty-eight and twelve thirty-two Highway fifteen. Call the vote. Still one person to vote. And that carries. Report number seventy from the Municipal Heritage Committee.
Thank you, Your Worship. It is my pleasure to rise and present report number seventy from the Municipal Heritage Committee and ask that it be received and adopted.
It's moved by Councillor Stroud, seconded by Councillor Shell. The report number seventy from the Municipal Heritage Committee be received and adopted.
So there are eight clauses. Would anyone like any of them separated? So we will vote on them as a whole. Please vote. Still one person to vote. And that carries. Report number seventy-one from the Administrative Policies Committee.
Thank you, Your Worship. I rise now to report, to present report number seventy-one from the Administrative Policies Committee and ask that it be received and adopted.
It's moved by Councillor Stroud, seconded by Councillor Bohm. The report seventy-one from the Administrative Policies Committee be received and adopted.
There are two clauses. We will vote on them as a whole. Number one is criteria to serve on a city committee. And number two is the consideration of proposed motion regarding amendment to our procedural bylaw. And that's just to put in writing what I already do. So you have five minutes, and, and questions do not count towards your five minutes. Okay, we will call the vote. And that carries by a vote of eleven to one. Report number seventy-two from the Environment Infrastructure and Transportation Policies Committee.
It's my pleasure to submit report number seventy-two for consideration and adoption. Thank you.
It's moved by Councillor Neil, seconded by Councillor Allen. The report seventy-two from the Environment Infrastructure and Transportation Policies Committee be received and adopted.
So there are two clauses. Would anyone like to separate them? Seeing none, we will vote on them together. So number one is the Kingston Declaration for the Right to a Healthy Environment, and number two is the Increasing Waste Diversion Survey. Please vote. And that carries. Report number seventy-three from the Rural Advisory Committee.
It is my pleasure to report number seventy-three from the Rural Advisory Committee and ask that it be received and adopted. Thank you.
It's moved by Councillor Bohm, seconded by Councillor Allen. The report seventy-three from the Rural Advisory Committee be received and adopted.
So there is just the one clause, municipal process for large renewable procurement. Councillor Allen?
Uh, thank you, Your Worship. Just a couple of quick comments. The Rural Advisory Committee has done a great job stepping up and offering to take a look at all of these proposals that are part of the provincial competition that are happening in the rural district. There's at least six of them, um, and, uh, that we know of. We don't even know of them all yet, uh, so hopefully that's it. But what, what they're going to be doing is reviewing those applications, listening to the community in the rural area, and bringing their experience, because several members dealt with the, our, our first large energy project out in the rural area. So they have experience with this, and I think what that will do is provide good advice and expertise to council on the impact of these in our rural area. We, um, uh, everyone I've spoken to about these are nervous, excited, supportive of renewable energy, but worried about other impacts that these types of developments can have on the community. And that's what we're hoping to evaluate. And this process that staff brought forward to the Rural Advisory Committee is a really great, uh, process, um, that will help ensure that the city benefits in the best way possible from any, uh, projects that we endorse, and that the Rural Advisory Committee will then pass on advice to council about those endorsements. So thank you, and thank you all for coming to an extra meeting at the end of August in order to, um, endorse projects that could be of a benefit to our community. Thank you very much.
Councillor Hutchison?
Just have a question. I'm completely supportive of this in principle. It's, um, whether staff sees or might, I was thinking of this thing in August, and how these things come to force, and they've gotta be okayed, you know, three weeks before they have something important to get done. So I'm just wondering about the, um, I understand why it says prior to council consideration, but does staff have any concerns about whether this wording will come back to haunt us in any way? So it's such that it would interfere with a project that we probably don't control anyway?
So ju- just to specify, Councillor Hutchison, is there a particular wording that you're, that you'd like staff to comment on in terms of it coming back to haunt us?
Well, the word's prior to council consideration. It go, as it says here, understood that Rural Advisory Committee received the information in question for prior input, so there has to be time to do that. And prior to council consideration, before this, it just came here, and sometimes in a rush. And I just want to see, make sure that we're prepared for the inevitable issues that will arise.
Commissioner Hurdle?
Uh, thank you. Through you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, we have actually laid out a process where we will be reporting to the Rural Advisory Committee with recommendations on August twentieth. And those recommendations are gonna come to council on August twenty-sixth. So most of the work in terms of review of the applications, and it's not just the applications in terms of the site design guidelines, but we will also be looking at things like the cost recovery agreements, the roads agreement, and the community vibrancy fund as well. So all of that information will be packaged into the reports to the Rural Advisory Committee, and I'm assuming there will be presentations by the proponents of that meeting as well. And, uh, and we will make sure that we have all those details in place in the reports that will be going to the committee.
Okay, that, that's good to hear, and that addresses what's happening in August. What I was more concerned about is whether we've got a process that takes us beyond that, because I'm sure that the ones coming forward in August won't be the last we'll hear of. So that's, that's really what I was referring to, whether we have the protocols in place to handle this.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. I, I believe that the process that we've laid out and the wording in, um, in this particular motion, a resolution to council, is, is fine with the process that we have, and also it allows us to meet the provincial deadline of September first.
Thank you.
Okay, so we will call the vote. And that carries. Report number seventy-four from the Nominations Advisory Committee.
It's my pleasure to present report seventy-four from the Nominations Advisory Committee. Moved by myself and seconded by Councillor George for consideration by council. Thank you.
It's moved by Councillor Hutchison, seconded by Councillor George. The report seventy-four from the Nominations Advisory Committee be received and adopted.
So there are four clauses. I'm just going to read through the names. And number one, that David Kailstra be appointed to the Kingston Environmental Advisory Forum for a four-year term to November thirtieth, twenty eighteen. That Catherine Tang be appointed to the Kingston Frontenac Public Library Board for a four-year term to November thirtieth, twenty eighteen. That David Fisher be appointed to the Kingston Memorial Centre Advisory Committee for a two-year term to November thirtieth, twenty sixteen. That Amy Birch and Douglas Strong be appointed to the Municipal Accessibility Advisory Committee. Note, term is for one or two years. Committee will advise and report back. So we will call the vote. And that carries. Nothing from committee of the whole. We do have some information reports. Just raise your hand if you have any questions for any of these. So number one is tender and contract awards subject to the established criteria for delegation of authority for the month of May, twenty fifteen. Number two, final twenty fourteen audited financial statements. Number three, heritage permits delegated authority approvals. Number four, retraction of notice of intent to demolish one oh one to one oh nine Princess Street. Councillor Neil?
Just a quick question of staff. Do we have any anticipated, anticipation for when this particular, uh, notice will come
Commissioner Hurdle?
Uh, through you, Mr. Mayor. I'm anticipating that probably within the next couple of weeks, based on the timelines that the proponents were looking at, or the property owner in terms of the, the potential project. So we are still working with our heritage consultant and their heritage consultant. We've started to have, um, meetings, and there's some follow-ups that are happening this week.
So, could I translate that as possibly August, probably September?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. My guess would be within the next couple of weeks, so I, I'm not sure exactly when, but it will be sometime soon, yes.
Thank you.
Okay, and number five, temporary flag installation at the Norman Rogers Airport. Okay, we have no information reports from members of council, miscellaneous business. Number one, that the resignation of Mr. Dave Zouarnik from the Appeals Committee be received with regret. Can I have a mover, please? Moved by Councillor Shell, seconded by Councillor Allen. Please vote. And that carries. Number two, that the resignation of Ally Ryder from the Housing and Homelessness Advisory Committee be received with regret. Moved by Deputy Mayor Stroud, seconded by Councillor Neil. And that carries. Number three, that as requested by the Canadian Chiari Association, council proclaim September twenty fifteen as Chiari Awareness Month in the city of Kingston. Moved by Councillor Bohm, seconded by Councillor Shell. And that carries. Number four, that as requested by the Alzheimer's Society of Kingston, Frontenac, Lennox, and Addington, council proclaim September twenty-first, twenty fifteen as World Alzheimer's Day in the city of Kingston. Moved by Councillor Osannick, seconded by Councillor Bohm. And that carries. And number five, that as requested by the Sisters of Providence of Saint Vincent de Paul, council proclaim September seventeenth, twenty fifteen as Social Justice Vigil Recognition Day in the city of Kingston. Moved by Councillor McLaren, seconded by Councillor Neil. Please vote. And that carries. Okay, on to new motions. Number one, moved by Councillor McLaren, seconded by Councillor, by Mayor Patterson. Whereas the communities of Kingston, Frontenac, Lennox, and Addington through KFLNA public health and the Kingston Academy of Medicine have identified that the misuse and trafficking of fentanyl patches, especially from jurisdictions that have not adapted the patch-for-patch protocols, creates a health issue in Kingston. And whereas the widespread establishment of procedures for the dispensing and return of fentanyl patches can reduce the harm to our community, therefore be it resolved that Kingston City Council add its voice to the Ontario Medical Association, the College of Physicians and Surgeons of Ontario, as well as the Ontario Association of Chiefs of Police, and request the general adoption of the patch-for-patch protocols across the province of Ontario. And that this request be sent to the Premier of Ontario, the leaders of the opposition parties, the Minister of Health and Long-Term Care, all the opposition critics, and to our MPP. And that this resolution be circulated to, uh, I guess through AMO, to all other municipalities in Ontario, in the hope that they too can voice their support for the general adoption of the patch-for-patch protocols. Councillor McLaren?
Thank you. This came up to me through the Public Board of Health, and as it turns out, Kingston is at the center of an epicenter of, uh, abuse of narcotics. Part of that is, as, as Dr. Moore had said, is because we have several hospitals here that actually prescribe this stuff. But also, we have a vulnerable population here of perhaps lower-income people who have the patch and can then be coerced into selling it or having it taken from them in order to funnel it to other jurisdictions that might have a demand for this. So having counseled with staff on this, with the police chiefs, with the Public Board of Health, with pharmacies, and with actual user of the patch at one point, and with a medical ethicist, who all agree that this is a very good idea, I encourage you all to vote for this, please. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor Stroud?
Thank you, Your Worship. I'm also on the Board of Health, and I'm very familiar with the issue, as I indicated earlier in my question to Dr. Moore. And I appreciate the work that Councillor McLaren's done and Dr. Moore to promote this issue. I just want to point out a very important point here, that there's no mention in this motion whatsoever of, of patients as being partners in this initiative. And they're the ones the most adversely affected by it. I will support, support the motion, but, uh, I was trying to think of an amendment that would involve a patient advocacy group in some way, but it would have been a token gesture, and I, I couldn't come up with a, with a suitable amendment. Uh, I think when, it's very important to note that this is coming from the Chiefs of Police, the Ontario Medical Association, and there's no mention in their literature either of any work done, outreach to patients that will be affected by this. And I think that that will be, uh, the final end result. I am on that end in the healthcare spectrum. I'm close to the patients. They often are ignored in these types of initiatives, and I'd just like to point that out, that maybe, uh, you know, patient advocacy should be high priority in something when, you know, if it ends up being that fentanyl patches are less prescribed than they were before, which is a likely result of this initiative, that may, may create pain and suffering to some of the innocent patients who were using the patches correctly and disposing of them correctly as well. Just wanted, uh, say I'll be voting in favor of this, but with that small note. Thank you.
Thank you. So we will... So we will call the vote. And that carries. For motion number two, I will turn the chair over to the deputy mayor.
I take the chair, and I recognize you, your worship.
Actually, I'll...
Point of order?
I'll ask if you can read the motion and keep the chair.
Point of order, if I could? I will take over as seconder since councillor Holland is absent.
Okay.
If you're looking for a seconder.
And I take that as being valid. So moved by mayor Patterson, seconded by councillor Neil. Whereas Novellas Kingston Works and its predecessor Alcan have been an aluminum manufacturing facility in Kingston for 75 years. And whereas the company began operations at its Kingston Works in 1940 to support World War II, and continues today to supply automotive and specialty product markets, thousands of men and women in the community have benefited from the work done at the plant, both in direct jobs and through the supply of goods and services to the site. And over the years, and the city has grown up and around the Kingston Works. And whereas throughout its history, the Kingston Works has been a key supporter of many local organizations and initiatives every year, giving back to the community. And whereas Novellas Kingston Works has played a significant role in Kingston's history as a leader in the production of aluminum for North America and beyond, therefore be it resolved that council approve an exemption to the moratorium on commemorative monuments in parks and public spaces to allow for the installation of a metal Kingston Remembers Style plaque alongside a bronze historical landmark plaque to mark the 75th anniversary of Novellas formerly Alcan in September 2015. And that staff be delegated to the authority in consultation with the Novellas 75th Anniversary Committee to complete this project. And that notwithstanding the proclamation policy, Kingston City Council proclaim September 12th to 19, 12th through 19, 2015 as Novellas Kingston Works Week in the city of Kingston. Does anyone wish to speak? Oh, yes, you may now speak.
Thank you, deputy mayor. As the motion makes reference to the fact that this coming September will mark the 75th anniversary of Novellas formerly Alcan in the Kingston community. A couple of items that we need to deal with in advance of that. The first is that, as everyone knows, that there is a commemoration strategy that is in the works, and that is something that council will be dealing with shortly. But given the timeline, we're not going to be able to wait for the commemoration strategy to pass and then be able to deal with this. And so that's why this motion is asking for an exemption from the moratorium that we have placed on commemorations, just simply because of the timeline we're looking at. The second point to note in the last clause is you'll say that notwithstanding the proclamation policy, that we proclaim September 12th to the 19th as Novellas Kingston Works Week. So typically, council would not proclaim a week in recognition of a company or a private sector organization. But I would argue that this is a case where there should be an exception to that rule. I think that it's very clear that Novellas and Alcan have played an enormous role in Kingston's history, and so many Kingston residents can identify with the plant. Either they work there themselves, or they have family or friends that work there. And so it's clearly a key piece of Kingston's identity. And so that's why this has come forward, and so I certainly hope that council can support this tonight. Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak to this motion? Seeing none, we'll call a question. And that passes unanimously, and I now return the chair. Thank you very much. So there are no other new motions tonight. Are there any notices of motion? Councillor Neil.
Yes, I have a notice of motion for our August meeting. Moved by myself, seconded by councillor McLaren. The clerks have received a copy of this motion. Whereas Hydro One is a public asset owned and paid for by generations of residents, rate payers, and taxpayers in Ontario. And whereas a public utility, surpluses stay in the province and have contributed to our common wealth. And whereas, as a public service, it has helped our province become the industrial heartland of Canada, contributing to generations of economic growth. And whereas, as a public asset, our provincially-elected legislature has been able to appropriately and accountably set electricity policy over time, such as green energy initiatives and the stewardship of nuclear energy. Therefore be it resolved that the city of Kingston states that it supports the continued operation of Hydro One as a publicly-owned asset. And furthermore, that the sale of any Hydro One assets be limited solely to the sale to other public bodies, such as Ontario municipally-owned utilities. And that this motion be shared with Kingston the Island's MPP Sophie Koala, MP Ted Chu, Ontario Premier Kathleen Wynne, and the opposition leaders Patrick Brown and Andrea Horvath, as well as Association of Municipalities of Ontario, the Electricity Distributors Association, and all municipalities in Ontario with populations over 30,000.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other notices of motion?
You have a copy of this already?
Okay, seeing none. Minutes. Mr. Clerk.
It's moved by councillor Turner, seconded by councillor Camden, that the minutes of the city council meeting number 2015-17, held Tuesday, June 16, 2015, be confirmed.
And that carries. So we have some tabling of documents. We have a number of communications. Is there any other business? Mr. Clerk, I'll ask for bylaws.
It's moved by councillor Osannick, seconded by councillor Hutchinson, that bylaws one through thirty and thirty-three through thirty-six be given their first and second reading.
And that carries.
It's moved by councillor George, seconded by councillor Camden, that clause 11.34 of bylaw 2010-1 be suspended for the purpose of giving bylaws five through 10 three reading.
And that carries.
It's moved by councillor Turner, seconded by councillor Bohm, that bylaws five through 32 and 34 through 36 be given their third reading.
Still one person to vote. And that carries. Motion to adjourn. Moved by councillor George, seconded by councillor Bohm. We are adjourned. Thank you very much.